Okay. Good evening, I am calling the Board of Education meeting for March 25th, 2020 to order at 6:32 PM. Let's see, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Churnus? Report of board action taken in closed session, there is no report. Approval of the agenda, may I have an approval of tonight's agenda? May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, a second?
Second.
I think because we're remote, we have to do every vote by roll call. Linda?
Yes.
Rick?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Matt?
Aye.
And I am also aye, that's five to zero. The agenda is approved. Okay, um, public communications. I'm not sure if we were supposed to read this entire thing, but on the agenda that's live, there's an entire description of the law change and the Brown Act requirements changes for this meeting and future meetings during the COVID-19 crisis. Public comment on non-agenda items. The public will be given the opportunity to adjust the board at this time on topics not listed on the agenda. And please submit comments when the meeting begins. So the live, the link is live and I have no, let me make sure, but I have no comments as of right now. Trent, do we believe the link is working? Can you hear me?
Yes, the link is live and if any viewers would like to submit a comment, they can go to the district website and under Natus News, you'll see the link to the agenda. And on the agenda is a link to submit public comments.
Great, thank you. So then G2, public comments on open session agenda items. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board during each agenda item. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board at this time on topics not listed on the agenda. So let's see if we have any comments for un-agendized items, I don't believe we do, let me just double check. Okay, so there's nothing. Dr. Churnus, at this time too, keep, if you don't mind, keep refreshing our email to make sure we don't get any comments, that'd be great if you can help me. H, board president announcements, I have two. Palace Far East Peninsula High School District is scheduled to return to school on April 20th. Next week is spring break and there will be no instruction. Okay, report of the superintendent COVID-19 updates, instructional program, communication strategy, security and safety and employee relations. Dr. Churnus?
Thank you, President Reed, members of the school board. At this time, what I'd like to do is is I'm gonna say a brief, some brief comments and then I'm gonna turn it over to cabinet and they are going to give a brief update on their areas. I would like to thank our teachers, our classified support staff and all of our employees for really stepping up and helping kids. This has been a really trying time on, on everybody and we've had so many people step up and support students. And so we are looking forward to continuing to do that and actually getting better at it. And so we anticipate schedules going through all parents in the next couple of days and staff in the next couple of days. So we have, so it's easier on, on our parents and our kids to be able to plan for their day. We have a lot of kids that are siblings in the same house and parents are trying to juggle instructional support. So, so we believe that we're only gonna get better at this. So we look forward to continuing to support students online until such a time that we can open the schools, hopefully that's April 20th, but we will, we will hold out, hope. We'll see and we'll look at that closer as we get nearer to that date. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to, to Dr. Gotonda, who can talk about the work she's been doing with our principals, with our teachers, the trainings and, and what it's gonna look like moving forward. The, the goal here is three to five minutes for each cabinet member. And then it'll be questions about that area. So it'll be Dr. Gotonda's gonna present and then the board can ask questions, then we'll have Dr. Horbath present, questions and so on and so forth. So with that, Dr. Gotonda?
Great, thank you, it's nice to see everyone healthy. This has kind of become my new normal is seeing everybody on Zoom. So I wanna first publicly thank everyone in the school community for their patience, hard work, their support. This transition has been nothing short of a whirlwind, so I applaud all of the students and the parents for just kind of leaning into this new way. And I recognize that this has not been easy for anybody, not the students or the families and certainly not our teachers or support staff who kind of have flipped their model basically in a week. So we have a lot of trailblazers who've jumped right into different ways of using technology to connect with students and we also realize for some access to technology and the comfort level is varied. So Educational Services has been working nonstop to kind of support this transition. So I have to really give a huge shout out to my team as well because they've been very responsive to the change. We've been working together with a lot of different divisions just to make sure that we are supporting everybody the, the way that we need to. So tonight, I'm gonna talk about a few areas on my update. It's going to be instruction, special education, and then counseling and mental health because those are the three biggest areas that we've been working in. So instructionally, teachers have been learning and trying out new technology, many are hosting live sessions with students. And I strongly believe this is going to expand and evolve as we continue with our remote learning. I wholeheartedly believe that the teachers miss their kids and I've talked to many teachers and I even got invited into a class and it was really just, you could just see the kids are the apple of the teacher's eyes. So it's actually been, you know, very nice to see different ways that teachers are connecting. I've been working with principals throughout the week and very intensively today to kind of figure out ways that we can have more structure as Dr. Churnus mentioned, so that when we return from spring break, we're gonna roll that out at the different levels. And I've been really impressed with a lot of the trailblazers, teachers who have been jumping on our, you know, teams, Microsoft Teams, which is not an easy thing to learn. And then we've also had a lot of different teachers who are trying different ways like Zoom to connect with their kids. And even classes like, you know, cooking. So one of our teachers is actually taking video of herself cooking, she sends it to the students, the students send her, you know, videos back of their, you know, outcome. And so I think that has been a really nice way to ensure that people who are teaching some of the non-traditional courses that are not the core electives, I mean, the core content areas in the electives that I've been connecting. I know that ASP's been meeting with kids and they're trying to think of ways to promote connectiveness to the campus. I understand that there was a couple of our schools that had spirit weeks and dress-ups and so I think that's gonna continue while we're out of school, which is really, really nice. And I talked to a principal today and, you know, they said that they went into an art class today on Zoom, which I thought was kind of cool. So I think our teachers are really trying to find a way to connect with their students and kind of make sure that there's some normalcy for them, which, you know, and this transition has not been very easy. We actually hosted a virtual principals meeting last week and we're gonna have another one tomorrow, so that's gonna be ongoing. Just a way to connect because I think this can be very isolating when we're all alone. And also to provide guidance, answer questions and then really kind of support them as they're working with their staff remotely. Our instructional coaches have been amazing, so Stacy and Becky actually rolled out a series of professional development this week and via Zoom. So we've had four sessions already and teachers are learning a ton and we're, they're really, really enjoying them based on the feedback that we're getting. So they range from technology-based trainings like Zooms, basics and tips and tricks for more advanced Zoomers, we had content-specific trainings. Today, we had a teams meeting with over 75 people, I was in, I was in there as well. And we're gonna have more trainings once the teachers return from spring break. So that's something that has been really well received from our instructional staff. And then we're also working with our education foundation regarding summer school. So not really knowing what the, you know, future is gonna look like with the coronavirus, we are kind of talking about different possibilities and options. So we're looking way, for ways to support the Ed Foundation, but also our students and families in the best way possible. It's a little difficult because we kind of don't know what the outcome is gonna be just yet, but we're planning for a lot of different options. Additionally, grading, so grading particularly of high schools, mostly juniors, is something that's of great concern. So we don't have guidance on grading from the county or state yet. So that has been a question that's come up from every single district across the state. And so they're supposed to give us guidance shortly, the CDE said that they're hoping to get something out from their level on Friday. And so, you know, regardless of what we do, we just have to keep in mind how it's gonna impact our kids, it's gonna impact college admissions and then also the equity, access and equity at this time. You may have seen that the IT department worked with Educational Services and we put together a little FAQs section for families and our staff and also resources for parents and teachers. So we're gonna be updating that as new information comes out. But we also wanna make sure that, you know, we are getting people what they need. So there's also gonna be something about mental health during this time for both the students and adults. Additionally, you may have also seen that standardized testing has been suspended. AP tests are gonna look very different this year than they have in the past and so we're working with the college board and getting notification from them. SATs and ACTs have been postponed until further notice. So on our resources page, we put some links there for parents if they wanna go in and see kind of what the new updates are, those are there for families to take a look. The ALPAC test, which is the testing for English learners for the summative end of the year, has been suspended, but we are waiting for guidelines regarding new enrollees. So if new students come in and they're English learners, usually we have to test them within 30 days and there is a one-on-one component that has to happen, so we're waiting for some guidance there. And then also there are some things that still have timelines, so the LCAP timeline is still in place and so good thing for us, we've already had five meetings with our committee, so we're gonna get some feedback from our administrators, which we can do digitally. And then we have not yet sent out our annual LCAP surveys, so we're trying to figure out what's the best time to do that. But if we don't, we still have some feedback from, you know, various surveys at the site level and then also our homework survey this year. So that's the instructional piece. Special education, so I'm sure if you've been keeping up with some of the briefings from the CDE and the county, the special education section of this transition has been really, really, really difficult. So the federal government and the state and the county have been very consistent in saying that to our best of ability, they want us to continue to provide services that are aligned to a student's goals and their IEPs. And so while they're not gonna look exactly the same, because for example, a student who might have a one-on-one aide in a school, obviously we can't have our, you know, one-on-one aides go into the home at this time. We are working very closely with our staff to see how we can support our kids. So we've asked our case managers and service providers to keep a log of all interactions that they're having, so that could mean continuing to hold IEPs, it could be amendments, it could be transition meeting. And so basically they're doing this via conference call, when possible, they're providing distance learning, they're sending resources, whether it's phone, group instruction, so they're trying to really do the best job that they can. So, you know, I really applaud Ms. Chapman because she's been in constant communication with the SFA, she's been working very closely with our legal as well as our county and state offices regarding this. And they're also regularly meeting with all the special educations and teachers and service providers, so then that way they understand what the expectations are and that the staff is being supported as best as possible. And then the last part of my report is on counseling mental health and student services. So Dr. Ramirez has been working really hard, making sure that mental health continues to be something that is, you know, a priority for us, even though the students aren't with us physically. So we participated in team calls with sage therapists, the intermediate and high school counselors this past week and the administrators. Our primary focus this week is to ensure that any students who have not engaged with their teachers, that we're reaching out to them to figure out if there's a barrier that the students are okay. So that's been their primary focus is making sure that we're finding those kids and making sure that those kids are okay. And then Trista, along with the sage and the counseling teams are also working on a risk assessment protocol. So generally, if a student is in need of support, it is easier for us when we have the student in front of them, so we can kind of read the behavior and we can read the expression on the student's face, so it's a little bit easier. So we're creating a risk assessment protocol to ensure that any students that are struggling emotionally, that we have a clear process for the site teams should somebody be at risk. And then we're also working with the teams to have a way to have a HIPAA compliant way of doing therapy. So you might have seen, my doctor sent something out about telemedicine or telehealth. And so we're using Doxy, which Torrance Memorial is also using for our school psychologists to do DIS counseling, our sage therapists, as well as some of our, our teams to do group services. School teams have also created an online form that students can fill out if they need to talk to one of their counselors or therapist. And so we're going to roll that out this, this week since they can't actually drop into an office, but they can ask for support. And then last, before I conclude my report, scheduling. So student scheduling was something that was right in the middle for the counselors, that it was interrupted right as we closed. So the teams are gonna be working on a plan to complete the students' requests right we, right when we come back for spring break. So we're kind of working through what is our highest priority, which is making sure the kids are okay, and then we'll start working through the scheduling pieces and planning for next year with the counselors. So that concludes my report, it was a lot and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Gotonda. Do I have any comments or questions from my fellow board members? Just go ahead and speak up if you have a question, because I really don't have a way to call on you.
I think it's awesome hearing everything that you're saying, especially with like the teachers doing those online interactions. And of course, it's gonna be different, you know, different grades and ages and content areas, but I think it's fun. You know, obviously the teachers want to see the kids and the kids want to see the teachers to bring that kind of sense of normal, I guess. I know I've been trying it a couple of times with my students and, and, you know, they wanna see each other and, and, I mean, they may wanna see me, I think they do, but I wanna see them too. So it's fun to hear like the cooking example that you brought up and what other teachers are doing. So I guess my question is, I know that we were having kind of like the Chromebooks being lent out and everything, devices if students needed it. Is that kind of over and, and do we feel like kids who needed a device got one? Are we all kind of set with that right now?
So the majority of students do have their devices. So I think that for the most part, we are. One of the things that we are working through, like I mentioned, if kids were not engaging, we are starting to call and make sure that we are seeking out those families to see what is the barrier for students to engage in the, in the content. And so that's part of the question is whether or not they need a device, do they not have internet at home? So we've been working closely with IT to make sure that if we needed to order some hotspots, so we've ordered those for students who may need them. And so that has been something that we have been working through and I think we have maybe a few that are still out there, but we are working with those site administrators to make sure the kids have the devices and the connections that they need.
Awesome, yeah, thank you, just really good to hear and I, I think, you know, having this kind of leeway with teachers and students and obviously parents, it's a big transition period, so I can all just realize that obviously it's not going to go the same instructional pace as before, but I think it will be nice to give those kids kind of like more sense of the normal after spring break. So thank you for everything that you're doing, helping those teachers as well and helping the kids with everything, so thank you.
Are there any other board members who wanna make a comment or ask a question? No? Okay.
Actually, I was just...
So Dr. Gotonda, totally appreciate everything that your department has done and what staff is doing. My question is, how do we make this a unified approach? You know, we have, you know, it's gonna be different by grade levels, it's gonna be different from intermediate to high school, but we have a difference between schools themselves. So how do we bring this up to being a unified approach that all parents and all students are receiving the same quality education? It seems that, you know, this has been rolled out to the principals, but that's just, teachers haven't necessarily bought in. So what's the plan on making sure that all students have equal access?
So I think part of it, obviously I don't work with, you know, staff directly, teachers, that is. So the principals, so I'll give you an example, I was on a Zoom call with a set of principals today and they're going to be working with their teachers in terms of, you know, kind of what the schedule looks like and kind of what their expectations are and also what is good for kids. So I think, you know, as Ms. Crawford was saying, right, it's good for kids and teachers to have some normalcy and have some connection. And I do feel like when I, you know, as exhausting as some of the meetings are, I think it's been really good to see other people's faces because I think that does give us a sense of connection and, you know, being able to ask questions or be able to get some support, I think is really important. So, you know, the principals are working with their teachers and obviously, you know, every teacher is gonna approach it a little bit differently. So we do have varying levels of comfort with technology, we have varying levels of, you know, comfort with the different, you know, platforms that we have. And so that's part of what the reason why we are rolling out training as well. And so the principals are gonna be working with their teachers, I think that, you know, the set of principals that I was working with today, they're, they're all very much aligned and so that helps, I think, with the district-wide consistency.
So, you know, knowing that we have teachers with different skillsets, has there been any thought about partnering them up? You know, we also, you know, and this might not be the, the most correct thing to say, but my biggest concern right now is math. Right? Because math is such an important building block for, for all future math courses. But I would really like to see a focus on math and to make sure that we're engaging all of our teachers so that they can support, you know, the, the classrooms. So if we have, you know, maybe a teacher who's not comfortable with, you know, online technology and we have another teacher who, you know, they might be a fiscal education teacher, but they might be able to step in and, and help with, you know, running that and setting it up. I guess what I'm looking is just to make sure that every one of our staff has a role and that they're a part of this, because they're also valuable, valuable to us, we don't want any of them, you know, it doesn't do any good to not have them included in the process. So really focusing on where and what we want our students to walk away with at the end of this, this period, right? And, you know, I'll be honest, to me, it's making sure that we haven't fallen behind math and reading. History and science, my favorite subjects, but math and reading is, you know, that's where we really need, those are the things that build year after year after year. So how do we make sure that we're doing that and, you know, that we're using all of our employees? You know, one of the great suggestions I saw was, you know, kind of a, a social recess almost, like an online recess for students to be able to participate. You know, do we have staff, you know, that might be able to, to lead that in any way? You know, somebody who might not have, you know, dedicated classes every day.
That's a great, I love that suggestion, that's a great suggestion. I think that there are some schools that are doing that, but I think that's a great suggestion that we can work with our principals, you know, if we can bring it up to the principals, we have our virtual principals meeting tomorrow. And I will speak to, you know, I think the transition has been really hard because when you teach in brick and mortar, right, to take that entire curriculum and throw it onto an online platform, it's hard for everyone and students included. And so the good thing is Educational Services has been working on essential standards, right? So, you know, we didn't know that this was gonna happen and so part of our conversation with teachers is stick to those essentials, what are the, what do we want kids to leave the grade level with and what do we want them to be able to come into the next grade level with next year when they go into the next grade? So that has been pretty clearly communicated to those principals and I've asked principals to talk to the teachers about ensuring that we are looking back at those essentials. And with the online or remote learning, it's really not about doing the daily check-the-box things, right? It's making sure that students are understanding concepts and skills that they're gonna need long-term. And so a lot of it could be, the teacher might teach something, they might go home and practice, they come back to the next meeting and they discuss it, right? As opposed to just turn something in and calling it a day. So I think that's definitely something that we are working with our principals on so that they can communicate that to their staff. In addition to, our coaches are also going to be rolling out professional development on ensuring that the lessons that they're building are really about concepts and skills that students need long-term and not just, you know, the daily assignment, if you will.
I also would like to add that recognizing there will be gaps in learning, no matter what, that whatever we do and we are doing our best is not going to be the same as daily instruction that kids would have had during school. So one thing that, that I am considering and the board and staff will consider is the possibility of a more robust summer school program. I know this came up as part of my report before we closed the schools, but it may be also something, you know, like some sort of catch-up classes, bridge classes that potentially are more robust this summer to try to, you know, help more kids out. Obviously, we don't have a budget for that, so it'd be about priorities and finding a way to do it, but it is something I think we should at least entertain moving forward because there are gonna be a lot of kids that come back and have gaps, learning gaps. And we need to figure out how are we gonna support this and, and, and so that's one, one idea at least.
Just finally was, it's the, the parent education component of all of this. You know, it's important that we let parents know what to expect, you know, that we provide them with, you know, kind of a skeleton outline of what's coming down the pipes that they, you know, because right now, the frustration that a lot of them have is they don't know what to expect, they don't know what's going on and they... We, I understand, you know, teachers are doing a terrific job going online and it's, there's no fault in being assessed here, but the parents are still throwing up their hands going, what do I do? And, you know, maybe one of our educational components would be resources where a parent who's trying to explain how this is being done can actually reach out and contact somebody, right? You know, so this is the, the fifth grade lesson plan and this is what we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, maybe it's reinforcing the fact that it doesn't have to be the, the Singapore method, but any way you teach it, right? But, you know, giving parents that opportunity to, you know, interact with their students and because of what we're doing, you know, historically with our curriculum, a lot of parents just don't understand how to do that. So how do we move that process along as well?
Yeah, duly noted. You know, I, I did talk to principals today about ensuring that they, the teachers communicate what do kids need for the live lesson that's happening, because, you know, one of the newest things about teaching online is that you have to have a different type of classroom management, right? And so if a student doesn't have a book and they get up and they walk away to go to the, you know, their bedroom, they may get distracted and they don't come back for 10 minutes, you've lost 10 minutes of the kid, right? So, you know, what do kids need for that live lesson? What is their independent practice? And then what do they need to prepare for, for the next live lesson? So, you know, that is part of the conversation and I think that's something that, for folks who haven't taught online before, that's something that is, you know, it's a very steep learning curve. But I also think for the parents, having that type of structure will be really, really helpful. So we, we agree and a hundred percent hear you.
Thanks, Dr. Gotonda.
Okay, do we have anyone else that would like, on the board, who would like to make a comment or ask a question of Dr. Gotonda? No? Okay, my only, my only comment would be, oh, wait, did you have something, Rick?
Hi, well, I actually agree with a lot of what Megan and Matt said. I do think that there's tremendous work going on around the district, you know, from, from bottom to top, among, from all the teachers, so all the administrators to make the transition in, in very trying times. You know, the, the, I do, I do agree with, with Matt that we really need to be, you know, have some consistent standard of expectations that we have, certainly at each level. So, you know, it's not gonna be the same in elementary as it is in high school, but at each of the, the three levels, we really need to have a consistent set of expectations. And I think that, and I'm of the view that there needs to be that interactivity for, for the kids to learn. And I think that that's the difference between being in school versus taking a correspondence course. And, and we don't want our kids to be taking a correspondence course, we want them to be taught by our great faculty. We gotta figure out how to do that and, you know, share our best practices that, you know, some teachers, I think, are killing it, right? In making sure that those are, that are doing really well, that those ideas are shared. You know, what, what are the, I know you mentioned on grading, that we haven't gotten guidance from either the state or county, understand that. But what are the thoughts that, that, you know, are out there for how we might deal with grading? Recognizing that it's really only, only an issue for the high school. Recognizing that it's really an only, only an issue for the high school students. And actually only an issue for the, for the, the, the underclass high school students, right? Three, three out of the four classes.
Correct. So, um, there, there is a concern for seniors, even though they've already gotten acceptances. What does that final transcript look like? So there is a concern at, at high school at every level. Um, some of the things, and this is not at all what the county is saying, but, um, I had a job alike with the assistant seats, uh, from the county of, uh, curriculum instruction. And so a lot of them were talking about a possible pass, no pass grade. Um, some of them were talking about, um, meeting exceeding. So kind of like a standards-based type grading. Um, so there really isn't, um, any clear answer yet. Uh, what we've basically been told from the state and the county is this is the most important time to give kids feedback. Um, so there's, there's a lot of feedback that kids should be getting in terms of the work that they're turning in, or if they need more support, that we're giving them more support. Um, but that is just kind of off the top of people's heads, things that other districts have mentioned. But I've kind of just, I reached out to the CDE directly and they said, just wait till Friday. They're working with the colleges because they want to make sure everything that they, they guide us on is also, um, congruent with what the colleges are saying.
Yeah, no, I think that last piece is important. So, I mean, I think it's important that whatever, whenever we discuss this again, that we get some input from kind of the UCs, the, the Cal States, and then the private colleges. Uh, you know, including the selective ones that some of our kids are trying to get into so that we have an idea of how it might impact admissions decisions for the juniors and the sophomores especially.
Yeah.
Um, cause in, and, you know, they're getting it from, it's a national crisis. So everybody's got the same concerns. And, and I think everybody realizes that they're going to have to make adaptations to it.
Correct.
Al- also the AP, I mean, AP is going to be a quantitative summative test, right? That they're going to do. Um, so, you know, I, I don't know, you know, that, that's another input into the process potentially. And then the, the other issue with the APs is it seems like, um, in the way that they're adapting to the crisis is that they're, uh, reducing the amount of material that's being covered on the cumulative test. And, and are we giving guidance to our teachers to teach AP? They should only be covering then the material on the test, or should they be covering the full material? Is that up to each teacher? You know, what, what's kind of the guidance that we're providing there?
So what was shared by the college board, we have a, um, kind of a rep that works with us from college board. So basically what they said is they're going to try to adapt the test so that it only covers materials up to the point of where most people closed. And so obviously people closed all at different times. Um, and so they're trying to figure out what that is. So that has been communicated to the associate principals at each of the high schools. Um, and I know because they all responded back to the emails, so they all are aware. So that information is at the high schools. Um, and they've been, you know, sending that out to teachers. What they have said is that they're going to be truncating the test down to about 45 minutes. Um, and so they haven't indicated whether or not that's going to be multiple choice and a free response, or if it's just going to be a-
They would, they said, they said it was only going to be a free response.
Um, and so is that-
They also published the list of units that would be covered by each test.
Correct.
And they definitely cut it down. I think they were targeting February 29th actually is kind of, and what should have been taught by February 29th.
Correct. So, um, so that being said, I think that, um, you know, the students are still prepping for those tests. Um, and, you know, they had talked about having multiple, um, dates that they would allow the students to take the test. Um, I didn't look at the website, you know, the last couple of days, just because I was working on other things, but I do know that, um, that is, that is, so every time they come up with something new, they send us something, um, and then they update the website. So we are in touch with them.
Okay. Well, and I, but I guess I'm still on the, what I think we, we, we need to address and clarify is what the expectation is for the teachers. Should they be teaching the full course? Or should they be teaching only, you know, what's going to be covered on the AP test? And it might be different, um, in different, uh, you know, subject areas. For, you know, for example, if you're going to go on to Acal, it might make more sense to get the complete course of calculus before you went on to Acal. Uh, but I, I, I do think that we need to figure out what should be the, you know, and if, if, if the right thing to do is to leave it up to each teacher at that subject level. So I, you're taking, you know, Chem AP, it's going to be consistent across the district, but that's okay. But we ought to figure out something that, that makes sense for our kids. Cause, uh, you know, hopefully most of them will build on what they learned in, in those classes in college.
Correct. So in, in, um, courses like languages, um, math that build on each other, it would make sense for the teacher to, you know, obviously prep for the test and make sure kids have everything that they need. Um, not knowing whether we're going to open on the 20th or whether, you know, we open whatever. Um, you know, I think it would make sense for them to continue to help the students get to the next level. Because then the following year, if they're, let's say in AP Calc BC, then they're going to need to know all of the information for that test. Um, same thing with a language, something like US history, you know? Yes, the history is very important. I was a history teacher, but it doesn't necessarily build on the next course. So if they're taking A push right now and they take AP Gov the next year, it doesn't build as much as something like, um, AP Spanish.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Rick. Um, is there Linda anything or no? Okay. Nothing from Linda. So I would just say, based upon the comments that I heard, Dr. Gotanda, that, um, we want to be sure that however the grading works out and however the county and the state deal with how we're going to grade our kids in, um, high school, that we do not have, uh, that our kids don't have a disadvantage. So that LA County doesn't decide some grading mechanism, maybe pass fail. And the state of California doesn't do that. We don't want our kids applying for colleges. And this is the year that they got pass fail grades and other districts didn't do that because they're in different counties. So please advocate hard that everybody in California decides to use the same grading mechanism so that no one is disadvantaged in the future. I'm not so worried about our seniors because most of them know, you know, at this point, what, what their options are. And I think those would be a lot, a lot of leeway for, for those kids. But I think for the sophomores and, and juniors in particular, um, if we can't put the different method than other counties, that would be potentially not beneficial to our kids. So, um, that number one. Number two, I have spoken to quite a few, um, informal, you know, people with kids and parents and this and that. And I think there's a lot of learning going on that is not classroom-based, that's not, you know, textbook-based, that's just learning about life skills that's happening every day. So I do think a lot of our kids are learning a lot of different things. I know they are at my house. So that is, um, a bonus that we're not going to know about till later, I think. But I, I, you know, it, it's, there is some good sometimes, right? So it kind of is what it is. Um, but I thank you for all that, uh, information, Dr. Gotanda. So now we are moving on to Dr. Butler, I believe.
Bacon the mute off there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, looking over at my notes here, first of all, uh, payroll is doing fine. Accounts payable is going well. The mail is coming in. Uh, it's being held at, uh, uh, purchasing by Brenna and then it gets distributed out on Mondays. Uh, all the cafeterias are cleaned. We should be finished with cleaning all school sites, uh, besides a couple of sites that were going in behind technology as they're doing a, a couple of projects. But in general, everybody's been working, uh, straightforward to get everything cleaned, taken care of and, uh, and ready to go forward. So, uh, Donna and, uh, Jim Fahey, uh, did a good job, I think, making up a schedule. Again, for the moment, we're also working towards April 20th return. So they were kind of looking at, all right, how do we get through spring break and be relatively equitable with our people? So what they did is they had the custodians do 10 days straight, uh, meaning five last week, five this week. Custodians won't be in next week during spring break. Uh, maintenance and operations, they're doing three days over the three weeks. So they're doing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for three weeks in a row. So again, roughly the same number of days, just done at different times. And then grounds has changed to mowing every other week. So they're not doing everything every week, but slowing that down a little bit, but enough to, to keep the, the grounds in decent condition. One other thing that we did too was with our SROs. So they're hourly employees. They, they work the hours that they do, um, but, uh, did some work with them to figure out is there something of value that they could provide during this time? So basically they're at, for the most part, halftime. They go in five times a week and, uh, do what's called on-call and they're going through and inspecting all of our sites. Uh, so they split the sites up between the two of them and I've asked them to go in different days, different times. Just to be an extra set of eyes and ears walking our sites to make sure everything's okay. So for example, they found at, uh, Penn High that we'd had some vandalism in the gym. Somebody had sprayed, uh, our fire extinguishers a little bit in the gym and stolen some toilet paper and, uh, paper towels as well from the custodial closet in there. Uh, if you want that single ply scratchy stuff? Okay, fine. But, um, still not something obviously that we, we want. So Trent and his folks are looking through security cameras to see if there's anything that we can find about that. But again, that's because the SRO was out walking around that they found that, uh, the next day. So, uh, that's what we're doing with our SROs. Um, next update, uh, Torrance Unified, as you saw, I believe in, uh, the communication that went out, they've been doing a great job helping with feeding. So anybody that needs to get meals can go down to Torrance and do that. We donated our excess perishables down to Torrance to help with that effort. They were appreciative of that. And for example, Hermosa does the same thing. Hermosa works with Torrance, uh, for sending kids over there because they're not doing their meals during this time as well. So, uh, we're doing that on the meal side of things. Uh, we're still working through, PTA is actually working directly with the hospitals in Torrance to see if there are any supplies that we have that PTA has donated over the years. Um, if there's any of those emergency supplies that can be used by the hospitals. So they're still currently in the state of inventorying that, taking pictures, sending it over. Uh, the feedback that we have so far is that most of our materials are made more for an earthquake situation, search and rescue, rather than for, uh, the kinds of supplies that a hospital would need. So so far we haven't found too much that they can work with, but we're still going through the whole shed and, and, uh, in each site and trying to figure out if there's anything we can help with there. Uh, we've also decreased electrical use during this time. We've started to work on, uh, some savings. So we've gone through, we're unplugging refrigerators as we come across them. Uh, we turned off, for example, the automatic air conditioning that happens at site. Um, we are getting less trash pickups. We're covering the pool. So we're saving on some of our natural gas for heating. So, uh, Chris Stafford is, is, uh, takes the lead on that and has been going through and, uh, making suggestions for that. Brenna has changed the trash, trash scheduled pickup. Obviously we're not picking up as often. So, uh, we're trying to do every little, uh, bit of savings that we can, um, in those areas. And then lastly, we're tracking all of our expenses that are directly related to this, uh, incident. So that we have the eligibility to apply for and hopefully receive some FEMA reimbursements for some of the expenses that we've had during this time. We did that successfully during the flooding that we had a couple of years ago, uh, the heavy rains. Terry Kami Biashi took the lead on that and, uh, did our filing. We got back to the, off the top of my head, like 37,000 that we wouldn't have otherwise. Uh, don't know what that looks like this time, but we're starting to collect data so that we can, uh, file for that going forward. That's what I got.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful. Um, the staff training that we talked about and cleaning right before we broke off and, um, had to, uh, close our schools, that was just a few days before. Were, were we able to start any of that or do, or do you know? The one hour training for the people who might not-
Got it, got it.
Have the training for the wipes?
The way that we ended up, sorry, uh, the way that we ended up working with that was kind of a decision on the fly that we were able to use Kids Corner employees and a weed crew to do cleaning that didn't require that, uh, as for training. Cause it turned out that was a little bit of a problem. But you always start with soap and water. They did that, great. Then you go through with the disinfectant and we had our, uh, train folks do that.
Okay, great. That's perfect. Um, do any, does any board member have a question, anyone? Or a comment?
Uh, yeah, I'll jump in with a question. Keith, what are you hearing kind of big picture-wise on the budget? In terms of what kind of hit we're going to take, if any? Um, I realize it's not our most important concern, but in the long run, it could very well be a huge concern.
Absolutely. Uh, well, Dr. Turner had us start looking at what savings we can do during this budget crisis, uh, uh, COVID crisis that, that in relate, as it relates to the budget. So we did do some work on that, put together some stuff. It's not a lot, but that's one of the immediate things that we can look at. Longer term, uh, we're, we have a call tomorrow with Laco, the CBOs do. We had a local CBO call today to just kind of touch base. And kind of the general consensus is, uh, you know, whenever we do scenario planning, we always go high, medium, low, you know, three ranges. Well, for this, we're starting at low, lower and even lower as we look at what budget impacts might be next year. We're very comfortable, uh, Laco and statewide organizations have repeated this often, we're going to get our money for this year. So the funding that we were expecting is going to happen, but we're sure there's going to be an impact next year. Uh, I think, uh, now this is me making a, an, a guess at this point, but I would start with COLA only. Then take away COLA and then start thinking about what if the state cuts us like they did, uh, at the beginning of the, the great recession. So those are the general ranges that I'm working with, but there's been no specific guidance yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Um, do any other board members have any questions or comments?
So, so Keith, you mentioned you were, uh, trying to calculate our emergency expenses. Do you have a rough idea of what they're running a week? Cause as I understand it, there are going to be disaster zone, um, uh, resource, or funds available from the federal government, uh, to reimburse-
Yeah. Right. That's the FEMA funding that I was talking about. So we're just starting to collect. For example, uh, Trent is getting mobile hotspots to provide internet access to people that, uh, wouldn't have it during this time. So that's an immediate expense that we would put into the FEMA bucket. In terms of, uh, uh, i- i- it's going to be more like specific things that we pay for that way. Because in general, all of our employees are being paid and are available as we need to, to come in and work on stuff. So it's not like it's a certain amount per week that we're spending on this that we have, that we're able to determine at the moment at least. And I'll put some thought into that, see if there's any, for example, what we're talking about right now. Is there any way to take some of our time, cost and effort for dealing with COVID-19 even in a board meeting and charge that into FEMA? So that's all part of what I'm looking for.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anyone else?
So Keith, one of the things I want to make sure is that, you know, we, we do have our employees that we're continuing to pay. So with the SROs, are, did we drop their pay now or are they still receiving the, the full pay?
The SROs are hourly. So they are dropped in pay, had the full conversation with them, looked in Matt. Uh, actually I think we reached a really good place with them, uh, a- as far as how they're going forward. They're happy about it. Um, there's a little bit of savings. I tried to think too about what will the cities say when we bill them for this share of this time? And they'll say, well, what? You're doing full-time, but you had no kids involved. So that was part of the thinking that went behind this too. So the work that they're doing is stuff that I believe helps out sheriff, helps out PVE police, helps out the district. Uh, so, uh, I don't think there's going to be any issue with that, but basically it's about halftime for them right now.
This, you know, to me, this would be a great opportunity for them to help develop our SIMs and our NIMs plans, right? To actually go through each campus and, and assess them. I mean, both of these guys are skilled at that. They've been, uh, on schools before. But, you know, how do we utilize them most effectively during this downtime?
Right. So we were planning to have them do that work during the summer, during the little bit that they would go over into the summer at the end of the school year. But it's the same thing. It's hourly. So if they want to put in more hours and work on that sooner, that's a, that's a real possibility. So let me loop in with Cheryl Dawson, think about what that looks like. We haven't put planning into that yet, but it's a reasonable suggestion.
And then, so, uh, my buddies Dave and Earl, you know, the, the maintenance guys, yeah, over MNO. Are they still able to, so are they still going on to campuses catching up on the backlog of orders or are all campuses essentially closed, period?
Um, in general, the, the philosophy that we've adopted from the beginning of this is number one, everybody works as remotely as possible. So that's to staff as a whole, we didn't want people congregating at the, the site. Then with MNO, uh, maintenance grounds, um, uh, so far it's been, what's a reasonably equitable approach? Given that we were thinking about April 20th. So that's what we came up with to at least get us through spring break. Yes, MNO's been in three days a week. Yes, custodians have been in two solid weeks instead of spreading it over three weeks. We have not developed a plan yet for what it looks like after spring break. That's one of the items I was, uh, going to bring up at cabinet tomorrow. Again, how do we be relatively equitable so that we're not causing any collective bargaining issues? But how are we making sure to get work done? So for example, another thing we found was a, a leak at, uh, in the PD High kitchen, uh, yesterday. This is Wednesday, Monday. And if we didn't have MNO around, you know, to take care of that, obviously it could be a bigger problem. So they responded, uh, took care of everything, but we have to think about what does that look like after spring break?
Uh, uh, you know, to me, I want to make sure that, you know, we're using this, this event as an opportunity to, to kind of catch up, right? One of the things that we don't do in our district is preventative maintenance. You know, we're always reacting to what has happened as opposed to, hey, there's some rust there. Let's spray some WD-40 on it and hope it doesn't get worse. Right? But we don't, our, our guys don't have the time during the regular school year to do that. So I don't know what it looks like, you know, from a collective bargaining- So I don't know what it looks like, you know, from a collective bargaining, from making sure it's all equitable. But to me, if we're paying, I would like to get as much done as we can for the money that we're paying.
Completely agree with the concept in general. Uh, that's where, uh, that's where I started from. As a matter of fact, was go through every, you know, ticket that you got sitting out there and get it done. As a cabinet, as we discussed how we were gonna roll out the short term, that didn't seem to be as important as making sure that we had good relationships with both bargaining units for how we were approaching stuff. But that is on my radar uh to, to work with Matt on and see what we can do. If this turns out to be longer, if it does, in my mind, that is what we have to catch up on. But uh, it's a team effort to come up with what that direction will be.
Right. Because, you know, maybe it's professional development for, for others, right? You know, but again, you know, we're, we're paying people and, you know, I would like to, to get as much value out of that as we possibly can.
Makes sense. I'm just making notes when I turn to the side. It's making notes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have a comment for Dr. Butler? Otherwise, um, okay. So then I think that brings us to um Dr. Horvath. Employee relations.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you, Board President Seymour. And um, I would just like to start uh by re- reiterating some of the things that Dr. Gotonda talked about. I think as a parent, um, I commend our teachers who have little ones who are teaching them as well as teaching their students. It's a really challenging time and I certainly commend them, all of our teachers at this point in time for the, the uh work that they're doing and for um the efforts that they're giving and um really taking risks, a lot of our teachers. Um, we'd like to get all of our teachers taking risks and that's, that's gonna be our goal moving forward certainly. But the ones who are, I commend them. Um, and again, the ones with little ones who are teaching and working, it's challenge and um hang in there. Hopefully we'll get there. Uh, they'll certainly understand why there are natural breaks in schools, in school districts. Um, and why, why there are things like spring break. So uh with that said, um, I'm gonna frame my piece by providing a timeline of events. Um, first, we were working closely with C S E A and P V F A to prepare for a possible district closure. Um, in that we were gathering information about types of instruction, materials needed and preparation for students in the event of a closure. Um, we collaborated and communicated prior to, during and after the closure with both C S E A and P V F A. After the closure, uh, the closure, we received draft MOUs from both C S E A and P V F A. Um, we had scheduled a meeting with P V F A leadership to discuss the draft MOU and initial district response along with the expectations for instruction during closure, both prior to and after spring break. We're talking short-term, medium and long-term goals uh for instruction. Uh, P V F A unfortunately leadership canceled that meeting about two hours prior to that meeting and communicated that they thought it was most appropriate that their collective bargaining team uh bargained the impacts of the closure. So um, as a concert, that was scheduled for yesterday and today uh we received a demand to bargain the impacts of uh school dismissals and closures letter from P V F A President C C Layback. So we will be moving forward with attempting to meet with, with their bargaining team. Um, we are planning to meet with C S E A President Joan Lewis and their C S E A representative, uh, Mr. Robert DeWitts this Friday um to discuss their proposed MOU and any issues, and any issues C S E A members are having during this closure. Um, it's really this collaborative type of approach that C S E has taken to help us grow as a district, I think. And hopefully we'll reach some consens- consensus towards our goals um during our meeting on Friday. I look forward, I'll provide the board an update from our discussions. Just understand while we're having preliminary discussions, there will be no um deal made. There will be no MOU signed until obviously the board has weighed in. So at a future board meeting, we'll bring any MOU forward um and make sure we're keeping you up to date on any discussion that's happening um regarding MOUs. Um, we'll make sure that that happens during the closure. Um, since the closure, I feel that uh numerous calls, emails, texts, as everybody has regarding specific employees and their pay and really just focusing on people at this point in time. Um, obviously people's livelihoods that are concerned about. So um, I hear you. We want to make them, we want people to work and people want to work and we want to do everything, but we want to take care, care of people first. Um, and then when it's time, you know, I think people are itching to get back to work and, and some normalcy. So we'll definitely, um, people are already talking about that and we've had some. Trent and I got this great, I won't, I won't call the person out, but had some email, just reaching out to us directly saying, whatever I can do to help, I'm here, I'm here for you. So it's that kind of spirit that it's, it's exciting to see in times like this. Um, also, we've been working with, uh, closely with the other human resources administrators in the area to see what they're doing in these different, difficult times and try to stay relatively, stay on the same page during this. We're sharing MOUs, we're sharing communications. Um, just to see how we could, we can best, best address issues and try to stay on the same page with each other. Um, and otherwise, we're taking direction from Laco as everybody and reading lots of opinions from A L R, our attorneys and other legal organizations um on these unprecedented matters.
Okay, Dr. Horvath, thank you very much. Um, do, does anyone have a question or a comment on the board?
So Matt, what can parents expect with, in the absence of an MOU? I know the district has drafted a plan that's been released to the principals. Uh, has that been shared with parents at all? What we're looking at from that perspective? Uh, because in the absence of an MOU, it, it really doesn't mean anything, does it?
Um, no, I wouldn't say that it doesn't mean anything. I think that we have expectations for our, our folks during this closure. I think, well, as I said, we've been talking short-term. Short-term is, as Dr. Gotonda talked about it, we had, we put together some great plans. People are taking risks, doing things. I think as we look more long-term, what our plan will be is to set more expectations, clear expectations, um, be some, that including some synchronous as well as asynchronous instruction that's taking place. Um, I will commend folks that are already jumping right into the synchronous parts. Um, one thing we've not heavily invested in um throughout time in our district is the professional development technology to be able to do some of the things that people are doing. So I'm, I, I'm highly encouraged by some of the things people are doing. I agree with you that we need to get some folks sharing more of that information with their colleagues, doing some of the things. I've speaking from my own uh experience with my own kids. I think um that they're at the Hermosa Beach City School District and they are same thing. Like I see their teachers expanding their repertoire every day and their instructional strategies was, which is really exciting. All the way to my first grader had her first uh Zoom conference yesterday talking about their roses and thorns. And they got to share with the class. Um, and it was super cute. Um, I won't just discuss the details, but obviously because it's uh, you know, that stuff is classified. But some of the kids, kids, super cute. And I mean, the teacher really, really doing things, but they're all expanding. And I see our own teachers doing that. I commend them and I'll commend our principals on organizing that and ensuring uh with the synchronous parts that there is not the overlap in, with people who have multiple kids. Because a- as I go back to one of the things I mentioned earlier is that parents, when they have multiple children, especially some of the youngers that need to have far more handholding during, during the experiences, it's a challenge. So we're trying to be mindful of our parents in this as well, so we don't burn them out. Um, because I think they're, they're folks that will, will, will struggle through this along with us. And I, I want us to, I encourage us to be mindful of some of those folks that, that weren't teachers and, you know, are, are struggling with either the technology or with just teaching on a daily basis.
Right. And I, you know, I'd have to echo what others have said. You know, the vast majority of our teachers are doing outstanding, you know, groundbreaking work. And unfortunately, we can't just focus on the ones who are doing outstanding work, right? You know, because even if there's only a handful who aren't, uh, you know, engaging or they're, they're not participating, that's still, you know, hundreds of students who are, who are missing out. And that's where my concern lies. It's, it's no way to say that our teachers are, are failing or not doing their jobs. It's how do we get those who aren't able to embrace um this technology or this, this new method? How do we get those students adequately cared for? And maybe it's, you know, uh, Dr. Gotonda said that it could be an asynchronous thing and, you know, they could still benefit, which is, which is fine. But let's just make sure that we're addressing all of our students um and not just, you know, those who are, you know, have the benefit of, of teachers who have truly embraced this technology.
Okay, anyone else have anything for?